Okay, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council for October 7th, 2019. Will the clerk please call the roll? Council members Brown?
Here.
Hayson?
Here.
Hersi?
Here.
Dickenson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Wu?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Is there a motion for approval of minutes from the September 6th, 2019 meeting and the September 23rd public hearing?
I will make a motion to approve both of those.
Second.
Moved by Dean, seconded by Jared. Any corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, those are approved. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none. We have two presentations on the agenda tonight. The first is for school resource officers. It's a joint presentation by the Urbana School Board, or, sorry, Urbana School District Administration and Urbana Police Department. So I believe starting off will be Chief Bryant Seraphin and Superintendent Jennifer Ivory Tatum. Before we begin, I just wanted to remind the public that, and the council, that this is not an action item, so there's no action to be taken tonight. This is an informational presentation. At the request of the School District Administration, the Urbana Police Department has developed this proposal for staffing both UMS and UHS with one full-time school resource officer for each school, with the cost to be borne by the school district. This is a departure from past practice where, for the past 26 years, the city of Urbana has funded a half-time school resource officer to cover both schools. I just want to, on the record, I strongly support this proposal. And the request that you'll be hearing about tonight, public safety is a top priority in our community, and that includes in and around our public schools. And beginning about this time last year, there was my office, the chief's office, I'm sure the superintendent's, the interim superintendents offered, fielded many, many phone calls and emails from parents, faculty, staff, the community members regarding the safety in these schools. And this proposal is part in response to that, but also, I think it's been a long time coming. So I just want to make it clear that this is a collaboration between the district and the city, and it's at the request of the school district, and I strongly support this plan. So I think you'll hear, you'll hear a lot of information tonight. It's an opportunity to ask questions. And we'll take it away, Chief.
You got it. I think she did very well, so thank you for coming tonight. No.[182.12][182.12](Laughter). I was gonna do that, or say, see the video of last week's school board meeting, where we had done, we had done a very similar presentation. So yes, Dr. Jennifer Ivory Tatum is here tonight, as is Deputy Chief Rich Searls, and School Resource Officer Michelle Robinson, and the middle school principal, Dr. Joe Weemel. So we're gonna play a little bit of musical chairs tonight, keep you on your toes, and hopefully prevent you, or present you with a lot of information. Before I go any further, she needs to make a public announcement. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. So, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to come tonight and share this really important topic with you. I did want to explain my dress, so I feel odd sitting next to the chief in his suit. But this is homecoming week in Urbana, and so today was Tiger Pride Day at the high school and School Spirit Day, so I'd like to invite you to join us Friday at 3 o'clock for the parade. The parade will go right down if you're here. Come on out, weather permitting, if it's not raining, we're gonna have a great parade. And then if you're interested in joining us Friday evening at the football game, call my office and let me know, and we will make sure you get a ticket to come show your Urbana pride Friday night for our homecoming game. So, thank you for that.
There you go.
Rich Woods. So, yeah. Not a local team.
And they just won, right?
And we just, yes, we just won the Crosstown Classic. We beat Centennial Saturday night and brought that trophy back to Urbana, 22 to 12. There you go. Thank you, Ms. Hersi, I forgot about that.
So, tonight what we want to do is, we're gonna be presenting a new model, a new way of thinking with regards to school resource officers. And I think the most, a very important piece of this is to kind of let you know where we came from, and sort of how we, how we got here. Although there will be some old-time Urbana police officers claiming they worked in the schools in the 1970s, the modern era of the SRO started in 1993, and Troy Phillips was our first school resource officer. He's gone on to quite a career with the Illinois State Police, and is a captain or major or some such thing with them. But he was the very first, we've had 11 since then, and one of which, whom many of you might know, the City of Champaign Police Chief Anthony Cobb was a school resource officer at the Urbana schools for a while. That role was a split role, and that's what that next bullet point is. Essentially, that person had to fulfill two roles. They spent half of their time as a detective, both with adult and juvenile cases, and they spent the other half of their time with their school responsibilities, which led to us trying to find someone who was rather well, rather talented at fulfilling both, both roles. And that's how we've sort of done this now for the last 26 years. There has been, there will be some ebb and flow to that particular sort of style. That's a very, kind of an oversimplification, but, so for instance, there, we had a major event with a murder over the weekend, and that detective now has been working the last couple of days exclusively on that, on that particular case, unable to fulfill duties at the school. So this model does have its drawbacks. And I would like to point out that there's also a, throughout the time that we've done this, there has been augmentation of this role by the police in different ways and shapes and forms, and whether that's extra patrolmen in the area of the Comcast Building after school. In 2004, I was on our street crimes unit, and many days and many afternoons in May, we would go and help assist with dismissal, as sometimes the end of the school year, tempers get a little excited. So, it's been a halftime position, but there have been other ways that we've supplemented with that, with our manning. The school resource officer has traditionally been in civilian clothing, so they very much look like a detective, because that was their, that was their other role. So just, I didn't point that out, because that'll come up a little bit later here. And as the mayor's already said, the school, the district hasn't had to pay anything up until this point. In spring of 2018, the school district administration spoke of, I guess, a change in philosophy, and they were gonna be doing away with their dean system. And we began to have a little bit of head scratching at the police department. We knew that the halftime SRO would work, but we knew that they had a very strong set of deans there that were able to assist with any sort of behavioral issues. The fall started, and we immediately began to see an escalation of behavior. Some things were minor, some things were more major. There was just a general discourtesy even throughout the building, where we had kids that wouldn't even go to class, and would simply mill about the hallways. I had multiple conversations in September with the school resource officer at the time, Jeff Steinberg, and he explained a lot of these same issues. Again, not just being the scurtiest, and not just skipping seventh-hour algebra, but indeed going up into fighting, and we had violence and other issues. However, the community took notice, and there was a school, a school district-wide meeting, a town hall meeting, if you will, at the Urbana High School. The mayor and I were present, as were various school officials and several parents, expressing their concern. In October, then, we changed, and we actually put that school resource officer, we moved him up to full-time at the school. So he was, all of his hours were spent at the school, in an effort to sort of try to keep a lid on things, and hopefully maybe we could get through some of the growing pains of their new, of their new system. So in October, we went ahead and ended that the secondary campuses being the middle school and the high school. October led through November, and into December, and we seemed to kind of make it to the Christmas break okay. And then February of 2019, the very beginning of February, we had a rather large fight resulting in 11 arrests, juvenile injury, a teacher injury, an ambulance transport, and multiple squad cars from neighboring law enforcement agencies came to assist the Urbana police in trying to get a handle on things and calm down that situation. It was at that time that I, this sort of flashpoint, that I began to get what I didn't necessarily get in the fall, which was a variety of telephone calls and emails and outreach that were asking me, "Chief, why can't my kids be safe at school? What are you doing about that?" And I know the mayor received similar, similar inquiries. We then developed another sort of patchwork plan to take us from February through May, where we would have the school resource officer, we would assign him to the schools for three days a week, and then we would have overtime paid officers for the Mondays and the Fridays, in an attempt to provide a presence of some sort at the high school for the rest of the school year. And that's what we were, and that's what we did, that's what we were able to do. At the beginning of that sort of patchwork program is when I had a very frank conversation with, at that time, Dr. Williams, Preston Williams, he was the interim superintendent. And I said to him, "Dr. Williams, is it time that we rework this model? Is it time to change how we're doing business here?" And his response was, "It's past time." And so knowing that we had backing, as we had, he and I developed this sort of plan, I met with middle school principal, Dr. Weemel, I met with Dolores Brown, who was the principal at the high school at the time, individually, and they both expressed support for a dedicated school resource officer at each, at each school. And it's, as I, as I've thought about this, you know, there are several things that feed into this, and I'm gonna wrap up my remarks and pass the baton here, but there's a certain reality, and it's a bit unfortunate right now, we've had a lot of questions, you hear a lot of discussion about gun violence in Urbana, and how does that, is it affecting the youth? Is it just the adults? And Melissa Haines, now Melissa Hendrian, so if I say that name, you know who I'm talking about, but Melissa has, she and I were doing different slicing and dicing and different ways to cut it, no matter how we did, we tend, we were finding that our juveniles involved with gun crime is, has increased in 2019. And there's no question about it, and you'll hear this from other speakers tonight, that what happens in the community spills over into the school, and what happens in the school spills out into that community. So I will, at this point, hand the baton off to Dr. Ivory Tatum, and she'll continue.
Okay, so, that last slide, again, was spring of 2019, and at that time, the district was, had entered into a new superintendent search, as you know. So I was lucky enough to be named in early May, and had the opportunity to come in and meet with Dr. Williams and the interim administrative team, and was very quickly brought up to speed on the discussions around SRO. Having been in a district before, I was very familiar with the model, but of course, that model had changed after the February 4th incident, so I was, you know, given some data and preliminary discussions that Dr. Williams had with chief, and, at that time, acting chief, and some of the other administrators. So in July, very quickly, I met with the chief and with Deputy Chief Searls to begin planning, you know, what were we going to do for the 1920 school year? You know, we, we, I kind of used the phrase limped along for the rest of the year with the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday model, with the current SRO, and covering the Monday Fridays. So, you know, again, that is something we wanted to make sure we had a firm plan moving into the beginning of this school year. I began exploring costs and looking at the cost analysis piece. So we came over here to the city building, my CFO and I, and met with Deputy Chief Searls and Elizabeth Hannan to begin exploring some initial numbers. We looked at, and those numbers, again, have been put into our preliminary budget at the district level to cover those costs. So we're looking at kind of grouping, you know, things like the salary and benefits, uniform equipment. So we were given some beginning costs associated with that, and I've shared those with our board, and right now, we have them earmarked in a placeholder in our budget, just so we could begin to have these conversations. But as we move forward through this process, we'll bring back an agreement that, as Mayor Marlin said, this is a collaborative effort, so the district and the city in agreement of who's going to do what moving forward and pay for what, and, you know, there's things like training, and time away from the school, and all those pieces that we'll have to iron out. But we began those conversations in August. I then also began meeting with Dr. Weemel, as the chief has mentioned, and our new interim principal at the high school, Dr. Berensen, and the administrative team at both, both places, to talk about what a dedicated SRO model might look like for both campuses. You know, it's a new experience for the middle school, as they have just been receiving support as needed. So we started talking about what that might look like, and what the UMS SRO would do. During those conversations this summer, I met with the chief and just said, you know, how important it was for me that our schools start off as safe places. And there was a commitment, as we continued to talk about who was going to do what, and how we're gonna continue to cover this model, and offer to SROs, chief said to me that we are gonna make sure that you guys start with what you need, and we want you to start the school year having coverage. So we were able to start right away at the beginning of the year with the five-day presence at the high school, as I've already mentioned, you know, the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and the Monday, Friday overtime. And then we started pretty quickly talking about what could we do to cover that at the middle school as well. So we entered that, we started the year with overtime, which the district covers the overtime charges, and then for the SROs, and then the city has been, as you have for the last 26 years, picked up the other pieces. After the school year started, we very quickly began looking at a full-time person for the middle school, and we'll get to meet that person, you probably already know her, but we began that selection process. Dr. Weemel was available to participate as part of the interview team. It was really important to us that we had school presence and school voice. We've talked about what the ideal SRO, what the skills are needed, you know, not everyone, this job isn't su, you know, there have been some wonderful people who have done it, but it isn't something that is suited to every single person. So I think it takes a very special personality, and someone with a special passion for the work and passion for young people to do this. So we were really grateful that our staff were able to be part of that selection process.
Perfect. The next one, because I think it's our time, first chair switching.
Yep.
So, since they were talking about a new model, let's talk about what that model kind of looks like. The Urbana Police Department subscribes to something that's often referred to as the triad model. The easiest way to conceptualize that is that of a three-legged stool. The first leg of the stool would be that of a teacher, they could provide presentations and things like driver's education, civics, legal topics, personal safety, et cetera. The second leg would be that of an informal counselor. They can provide support to our young, young people in the school, parents, staff. Their exposure to different services and organizations proves to be invaluable to all those people there in the school. And then, of course, the third leg is that of a law enforcement officer, and they would provide a presence to deter crime, and of course, act when appropriate, and to, of course, protect all the occupants of the school. So, if we're, if we're starting from there, what are some of the goals of the school resource officer? The first is to provide a safe learning environment for everybody in the school. The next would be to provide a valuable resource to staff members. The third would foster a positive relationship with youth, and the fourth would develop strategies to resolve those issues. Those four bullet points are shamelessly stolen from the National Association of School Resource Officers website, but it holds true, those are the sorts of things that we are interested in doing. So if we were to move on with a full-time SRO process and program, we would, we would have to begin with initial in-house training, and we would use former and current school resource officers to provide that initial training, until we could get more structured training from NASRO. Those classes are available throughout the country at various times. We, of course, would try to find something reasonably close for cost-saving purposes. And then we would follow that up with more advanced NASRO training on things like adolescent mental health and different legal topics along the way. One thing that the National Association of School Resource Officers recommends is an officer-per-capita ratio. And the ratio they recommend is one per 1,000 students or one per building. Prior to this year, we met neither one of those per capita recommendations. So, since we're talking about the ratios, let's talk about where we're actually at. The Champaign County Sheriff's Office has one school resource officer for about 1,500 students. Champaign Police has one for just under 1,000. Rantoul has one for about 1,250. In our old model, we had one for 4,322. With this new model, we would come pretty close into compliance, having a ratio of one to 1,081 students. So.
So next is, we'll bring up Dr. Weemel, and I'll let him introduce our new person at the middle school, and they're gonna talk to you a little bit about the day in the life of our current UMS SRO.
Okay, good evening. I'm Joe Weemel, the principal of Urbana Middle School.
I'm Officer Robinson, the new SRO at the Urbana Middle School.
So our slide is to just speak briefly about a day in the life at Urbana Middle School, and specifically for our school resource officer thus far this year. And so you can see just a kind of a daily schedule of an eight to four. Some of the key areas of support that the school resource officer, Ms. Robinson, has done, a lot of work is, are more of what we would consider our loosely structured times, or more loosely structured times, when students are not directly in class with the teacher. So the arrival procedures in the morning, the dismissal procedures in the afternoon, the lunch, kind of transitions to and from lunch, those are some really important areas for broader supervision that the SRO provides a lot of support with, especially the morning arrival time at the front door, what we call our front kiosk, and the dismissal time with traffic support, students getting onto the buses, making sure safety is a number-one priority at those key moments of time. The school resource officer also supports throughout the hallways, and the front door, and office staff, and has office hours where she's working on different office work types of responsibilities. But I would say, one thing to emphasize is that she is not directly involved in the day-to-day discipline, right, with students. So, to be more specific, if a student is struggling in class with their behavior, we do have a couple of middle schoolers who tend to have trouble with behavior in class at times. That's not the role of the SRO, is to intervene and respond to those classroom calls for support for student behavior. That's the role of administration, that's the role of counselors, social workers, restorative practices, facilitators, et cetera. Our school resource officer is working more around the broader school safety, the broader teaching of being preventative with students around social media. That's probably one of our biggest needs and biggest priorities right now, is social media education, social media bullying, cyberbullying, different issues that are going on online that our children are wrestling with metaphorically, and that is a key part of her role thus far this year. Also, working through things that are going on in the community, and making sure that we are aware of things that happen over the weekend or over the evening that she's aware of through the police department, so that we are more proactive in working with students as they're coming in the building. A variety of other things that are on there at the bottom, as it relates to staff meetings, one of the important things, I refer to as Mrs. Robinson instead of Officer Robinson, because she's a part of our staff, right? So, not that a police officer can't be a part of our staff, what I mean is, we view her as a teacher, we view her as an educator, a staff member in our building. And so that is, she comes to our staff meetings on Mondays at 4:00, she comes to our Wednesday collaboration meetings, she's meeting with the Youth Assessment Center case managers and the students that we have that are working, students and families that are working with the Youth Assessment Center, and a variety of other meetings with parents. The last thing I'll say before I pass it back over is, one of the biggest things, so this is my second year as principal at Urbana Middle School, last year was my first year. I've been in the district almost 15 years, but last year was my first year in the middle school. With everything that was going on last year, it was quite the start to my career as a principal there. One of the things that I underestimated was the, the role that a school resource officer can play in working with families, families that are upset by different things that are going on in the lives of their children, in the lives of their peers, their children's peers, and helping kind of de-escalate situations, helping problem-solve around situations that sometimes families come into the school really upset, wanting something to be done, wanting to contact Urbana Police about something that may be going on online. Having a school resource officer there has been extremely helpful in kind of just working through those situations as they come. Because families want to make sure their babies, their children are safe, and that has, there's been a number of instances already this year where just having Mrs. Robinson in the building has been extremely helpful, and just resolving some of those issues that they just want to make sure that we are handling them correctly, and having her presence there has been extremely helpful in a lot of areas. I said that was gonna be the last thing before I pass it over, so that, I'll hold true to that.
So, one of the reasons that I was picked for the SRO is because I was born and raised in Urbana. I went to Lille, the middle school. Halfway through the high school, did graduate from Jew to Christian. I'm multiracial. I grew up in Scottswood area, so I've walked the street with these kids, I know where they come from, I know the backgrounds, I went to school with a lot of their parents. From there, the biggest thing is the Youth Assessment Center, especially in the junior high level, the biggest thing to work with these students is trying to redirect their path or their behavior. When I talk with a lot of them, it comes down to, you have to make a choice, your path is your choice. And one of the things that we, that the school staff and I work really hard on, is trying to bring them back to where they need, they need to be, and try to help them focus on their path. I spend a good majority of the time, like I said, working very closely with Maria at the Youth Assessment Center for the children that are on the station adjustment within the school. By doing this, it allows them to successfully complete the station adjustment, because it's a lot of times up to them, rather than their parents, to get them where they need to go. So we can work a little bit closer with them. Education-wise, a lot of these, a lot of the students that are in the, that are given the station adjustment for some sort of criminal activity, a lot of them do not understand what crime they've committed. Where I come in is, it's kind of reeducating them, teaching them that this is a crime, that these, these behaviors can get you in trouble.
Can you define station adjustment?
So a station adjustment is, it's, I call it a grounding, but with a more formal way for the students. If they commit a crime, anywhere from theft, disorderly conduct, harassment, to fighting, the youth asses, police officers can refer them to the Youth Assessment Center, where they go on a formal station adjustment. The Youth Assessment Center, at that point, they, it's a supervision. They have to follow normally, all school rules, household rules, they'll have a curfew. Some of those rules come down to if they are, they've done, if they've committed a crime with others, with other juveniles, they can't have contact with them. If their crime involves social media, they have to be off social media. So if anybody, it's kind of like a courtroom supervision, but through the Youth Assessment Center. They do peer, peer court, and also, depending on the crime, there will be, they, it's required for counseling. A lot of our children that commit these crimes, there is some kind of secondary issue for the reason why it's done, and they need more counseling, the necessarily, a hand, you know, a, thank you, punitive consequences for their, their actions. It's more, we need to figure out why they're doing what they're doing. Yes?
So, if I can just get a clarification, so a station adjustment is, me, is the same as punishment? That's synonymous with punishment? Well, on some level, I meaning, I mean this, they go and they get assessed, and then they are, they get whatever crime they've committed, it could be cyberbullying, or verbal assault, or assault, or something like that, that's defined for them, and hopefully, they get an understanding of what that means, and then they go into, they could be, it could be peer, peer court, it could be counseling. Do their parents get any guidance? Do their parents get any guidance?
We, they try.
Because that's the first thing that needs to happen.
The Youth Assessment Center tries. So, it's an alternative to the court system, is what the Youth Assessment Center is. So, as a licensed juvenile officer, I have the authority to decide whether or not I'm going to send it over to the state's attorney and let that side handle it, or if we're going to let the Youth Assessment Center handle it, the school handle it, or myself handle it. From there, it's, it's more of a restorative-type behavior with the counseling.
Okay.
They have to commit some type of crime. Cyberbullying is technically not a crime. I would say that depending on what kind of things are said, it can fall under disorderly conduct, or it can fall under harassment.
Sexting, let's just say that, that's a crime.
Yes, yes, yes.
That they usually don't know that they're committing.
Yes, but they're, you don't, with juveniles, you don't want to label them with certain crimes. So, there's actually new laws out that soften those crimes, so it's more of a, how we called it, like a truancy, like it's almost under the same, falls under the same lines as truancy, so it's a delinquent-type crime.
Okay, okay, okay.
So, we're not like labeling them, because if they were an adult and did some of the things they were doing, it would be way, way different.
Oh, yeah.
But since they're juveniles.
Exactly.
So, these are the things. Unfortunately, one of the biggest things that I would like to bring to the school, and what Maria and I have done, is that the Youth Assessment Center falls under the lines of, they feel it's up to the child. That's where I fall into play. A high school student, yes, maybe. If you're 16, 17-years-old, depending on your, your, your level of maturity, you may be able to handle things on your own. Definitely, somebody in a junior-high setting, no, it's up to their parents to make it happen. One thing that we have learned that, and Maria and I, is if they are, so, the school can also refer them to resources at the, as Youth Assessment Center, because it's not just for station adjustments. There's lots of resources the families that can use there, whether it's counseling, any kind of nutrition, those, it's...
Parenting classes.
Yeah, I think DCFS handles that. I do not think the Youth Assessment specializes in youth, so it's anything...
That's you.
I know, I know.
Parenting with love and limits? I believe they refer to parenting with love and limits.
They might, they might. But, from there, what Maria and I would like to do is kind of start holding those accountable. By bringing it into the school, it allows us to work a little bit closer with the kids and make it successful for them, because they're not, a lot of them are not getting the assistance they need at home. But one of the things that, that we have learned is that when the school refers them, there's no kind of consequences for the parents, but if police refer them for something, the parents are more likely to hold to it, because they don't want their child to end up in the court system, is how that works. But I'm not saying that works for every family that is offered the opportunity.
Now, is assistance a synonymous with discipline?
In terms of...
Are those, are those two words, are they being used interchangeably in some way?
You can say it's discipline, but it's not, it's, it's light compared to where you would be...
It's like timeout?
Yeah. It's a restorative, it's restorative, it's trying to correct their behavior. We're trying not to get the...
Teach them how to replace the misbehaviors which they were doing previously, right? So, when we think about, I, I don't have much control, I don't have any control over what goes on at the Youth Assessment Center, but what goes on within the schools around consequences and discipline, the most important form of discipline in a school setting is what's being taught and what's being learned through the misbehavior and through the consequence, right? So, we can have punitive or restorative consequences, and as lo, if we're not addressing the underlying reasons as to why the student is misbehaving, and replacing it with something better, and teaching them how to replace that misbehavior with something better, then it, we're going to constantly be spinning our wheels. And so, there are times where we are more restorative than punitive, and there's times where we do a traditional suspension, and we're trying to couple together the counseling and the therapy and the interventions that are needed to improve that behavior moving forward. So, sometimes we refer to assistance and discipline as the same thing, and, but our, our approaches may differ a little bit in regards to what we're providing for students and families. So, when, what I think is most important, as it relates to the role of the school resource officer on the teaching and counseling side, is we, for example, we had eighth-grade girls recently that were engaging, middle-school girls, not just eighth-grade girls, in online social media sharing of images that were inappropriate, right? That if you were an adult, you would get into big trouble for. And the students had no idea what was wrong with that, right? And so, the middle-school brains, they, they're, they have no idea why that's wrong and why that's a crime. Being able to sit down with the parents and school resource officer and have those conversations, because this wasn't happening in school, this was happening at night or on the weekends, and it was affecting the learning environment, right?
That's a, that's a parenting problem.
Well, and that's, our role as a school is to support the students and families.
I get it.
And that's a teaching and learning moment for families and for us together, as to how it affects the learning environment.
Ms. Byron, did you have something?
I just wanted to say, I think, write down all your questions, and we'll get to them at the end, and then if you have more to present, we'll continue with the presentation.
I'm sorry, yeah, I just wanted to get, but like you, I wanted to understand...
Yeah, I knew station, I knew a lot of listeners at home would have known what that was.
As I wrote that down.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so, yeah. I just want to emphasize the role of, also, what we haven't mentioned, it may come up later, is the role of broader school safety, and I think it's really, I, I feel more comfortable as a principal, and I know educators feel more comfortable, and parents feel more comfortable, when there are broader school safety risks of intruders and the broader issues that we're experiencing as a country. To have a school resource officer daily there makes me feel a little bit more comfortable, even though we have policies and practices and drills, in case of an emergency situation, crisis situation like that, having a school resource officer there every day makes me feel a little bit better in that regards. I think that's another important component to this as well, so.
Okay.
Musical chairs.
That's right. Okay, so, because we don't have the high school SRO here, I actually asked Lieutenant Matt Bain while he was on jury duty two weeks ago, I said, "Hey, can you write down what you do for me while you're sitting there waiting to be called for jury duty, just to be excused?" And he said, "Sure, great, no problem." So, this was the list of things he sent me. He said typically his day started out meeting with principals and, and other staff members, just to find out what's going on, just have conversations. It was daily, first-thin conversation, basically like a briefing, and find out what the needs are, you know, find out if they have something in particular that needs to be worked on. Maybe it's a theft, maybe there's a disagreement between kids, maybe there's something going on in social media that the school's found out about, maybe there's a particular threat. So, if, if the staff member then gave the high school SRO something specific to work on, then he or she would work on it. He, of course, said that he did the same sorts of check-ins with the hall monitors, and he'd walk the halls and talk to the kids and, and speak with the staff, and he would also make a point to be in the lunchroom during all three lunches.
And an SI is a student interventionist?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry.
Yes.
And then, of course, there's report-writing and documentation time. These things require documentation. The police department's usually pretty good about getting some sort of documentation out of all these things. And then, that might be followed up by a classroom presentation like I spoke of earlier, maybe it's a civics lesson, maybe it's a driver's ed class, something like that. And then, he would spend the day, spend the end of the day with, during the dismissal process, with students and staff outside. So, that was just a quick snapshot of the day in the life of a high school SRO.
And I just want to add to this. So, if we go back to this slide, thinking about what Officer Robinson said and what Deputy Chief has offered in terms of, you know, our goals for the, the school resource officers, nowhere in these top-four bullets do you see that, you know, our goal for them is to be arresting students, right? And so, we're going to talk about that in just a second. But also, Dr. Weemel did allude to something I was going to mention too, you know, we have a district crisis team, I'm heading that up with one of our assistant soup's. But again, I applaud Urbana in that, gosh, five-years-ago, some, I keep forgetting, so...
Time flies.
Yes. At, at the time, Lieutenant Searls and Bob, who has left us now, were part of our district crisis team, where, you know, we were one of the first districts in this area to begin drilling the intruder drill when it became a requirement via school code, doing that with students. And so, you know, they were, they were part of the committee, and at the time, you know, every year, we grew in our practice and grew in our, our procedures around that, and we're in a really good place right now as a district. We're revisiting that again, you know, those drills will be coming up here in the next couple of weeks, and so, that is a really healthy collaboration where our students see police officers, they know that their job is to keep them safe, but we, you know, in, in the world that we live in now, unfortunately, we have to have conversations about what would you do in school shooting events. So, as we talk with our board about that, you know, it makes us all feel more comfortable knowing we have Officer Robinson, and, and we would have someone at the high school who would be our first point of contact in the event that we had someone in our, our buildings up to no good, basically, in there for the, for the wrong reasons. So, I just wanted to talk about that a little bit more and add to that. And we're going to talk a little bit more about the tiered approach.
Yeah, so, the good superintendent offered a pretty good segue. One of the things that the school resource officer specifically talks about is, the purpose of their presence isn't to arrest kids. And, and the, the statistics have, have held true to that, that, you know, arrests aren't up, they're actually down. So, one of the ways that that happens is the school resource officers help the kids stay, believe it or not, out of the juvenile justice system by having conversations, by talking to them, by saying, "Listen here, little Johnny, you shouldn't do that, and this is why." Some of the things that Officer Robinson was talking about. By, by having those conversations early on, you can actually keep the kids out of the juvenile justice system. Some other things that have led to a reduction in the juvenile justice system, other alternatives, you know, the school resource officer can sort of usher things to school administration. They can, like I said, they can handle something informally. They can handle something more formally through documentation, maybe it's a referral to the Youth Assessment Center. And with respect to station adjustment, the way I always describe it, it's like, it's like police-enforced probation, and the version of that is, there's no criminal record then. I say, "Hey, for the next 90 days, I need you to pay attention to Mom and Dad, I need you to show up to school on time, I need you to do all your schoolwork," and those are the sorts of, and then at the end of 90 days, poof, it's gone, it's done, okay? So, that's the way I describe a station adjustment.
And if they fail to, if they cannot control themselves for that 90 days?
Sure, so, if, if for some reason they fail a station adjustment, we do have the option to reissue the station adjustment, to extend it out, to send it over to the state's attorney's office, and just because we send something to the state's attorney's office doesn't mean the state's attorney's office is going to file a delinquency petition. They can turn around and say, "No, put them on a station adjustment," or they can just decline charges altogether. So, so, there's lots of ways to get out of, out of this, this juvenile justice system path.
They have many choices.
There's a lot of people with a lot of choices along the way.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. So, let's see, where was I? Youth assessment system, so, one of the other things that Officer Robinson was talking about is there's lots of referrals, there's linkage to services, whether it's drug and alcohol abuse, or maybe it's a referral to parenting with love and limits, or other support programs, that they don't just do station adjustments, they do lots of stuff, and it's, and it's really for the purpose of helping the kids out, to keep the kids out of the juvenile justice system and send them in the right direction like Officer Robinson was talking about, and, and the principal regarding, you know, replacing with good behaviors. And of course, you know, one of the other ways that there's, you know, avoidance of the juvenile justice system is there's obviously a state's attorney's office review. They review cases, they might say, "Yeah, that's great, thank you for the report, we're declining charges." Happens all the time, right? And of course, there's been legislative changes over the, the last several years. The ages of juveniles has been raised to 18, there's been increase in push and community-based sentences, there's been mandates on judges to avoid sending kids to the Department of Juvenile Justice, changes in juvenile Miranda, I'm waiting for the list, there's a long list, mandatory recordings on some crimes, mandatory attorneys on some crimes, and there's even a new law regarding policies and practices that occur when police officers interview kids in the school building. So, those are lots of different things that sort of avoid this, what is often referred to as school-to-prison pipeline. There's lots of ways that we try to keep, because here's the thing, we don't want to put kids in prison, we don't want to put kids in jail, we want them to do better, right? That's what we want, that's what we want for our kids, so.
All right, and then, just a couple of discussion topics that we had with our board that, you know, I'll just kind of share with you, the discussion. We, as Chief said in the initial slide, is for the last 26 years, the school resource officer that we've had at the high school has been dressed very casually as a detective would, in street clothes, I guess I would say, but they are armed and they do carry their badge. I don't know if you want to talk about the full uniform first?
Sure, I'd love to. So, so, part of the discussion here was been, what, how do we want to dress the SROs as we move forward? And a lot of police chiefs were like, "Full uniforms all the time." Makes them very easily identifiable, people can't be confused. I didn't know that was the police, and so, then I did A, B, and C. And so, officers dressed in uniform helps with that sort of, any kind of misidentification. The full, the full duty belt with the accompanying gear is very helpful, because then they have all of their tools with them, it's not just hands or, and guns, they now have, well, they have their baton, and they have their pepper spray, and they have the other stuff that they've been trained with. So, most police chiefs will push towards the full uniform. I recognize that would be a huge change, so we've, we've kind of, we, there are other things where there are modified uniforms. Our bicycle officers have a modified uniform, we have a hot-weather uniform where they wear like a polo shirt with cargo shorts and whatnot. And, so, sort of how Michelle is dressed tonight is how she's, I believe, been dressed with an Urbana Police polo. We actually, these are a little more informal, we actually envisioned one maybe a little more, maybe it has like an Urbana Tiger on one side and police on the other, and a police on the back, so that she's at least identified, but it wouldn't necessarily be in the polyester blue uniform that all of the regular officers, patrol officers would wear. So, we've had, we got a little input from the board, I think, last week, and so, we're kind of working on, on trying to figure out what we think would work best there.
And I think one of the concerns with the board is, you know, we don't want, our board is, is not alarm, you know, I'm not taking an alarmist view in having someone walking around in their full uniform. But the modified uniform, as Dr. Weemel has already alluded to, we've already seen examples of Officer Robinson's presence de-escalating and kind of bringing situations from here to here really quickly, just when she arrives on the scene, right, or, or joining the conversation or joining the interaction, I think is really important for parents and staff, you know, people do tend to escalate very quickly when your, their child is involved, or, you know, Ms. Hershey, you've talked about some of the discipline things related to this, and, you know, we've had parents who have maybe not had positive interactions with the police outside in the community. And so, I think it just brings a different sense of leveling things when the officers are a little more, I guess, professionally dressed and easily identified as an officer. And, and so, we like the modified uniform that Michelle has been, I'm, I'm sorry, Officer Robinson has been wearing, she's been wearing her belts, and, and it doesn't alarm the students. I know a couple of our board members questioned, you know, are the kids afraid of the gun, her gun, or has, you know, I think someone asked, have, have students tried to reach for it, or anything like that, and none of that has happened. I think they have questioned, you know, why are you carrying your gun, and, you know, why do you have those items on, and her response has been, "To keep you safe." And that is why she's there, and that is why we want school offers, uh, resource officers there, is because their primary role is to keep everyone safe, and that includes staff, parents, students, everybody. Another discussion that we've had at our board level is, these officers, while they will be in our schools 10 months out of the year, they will, 12 months out of the year, be Urbana Police officers. So, what do they do during those times of the year when school is not in session? So, this is just a brainstorm list, brainstorm list, it's not end-all, be-all, but it's just a few things that we discussed. You guys have heard, I think, has, has the Self-Made Kings group...
Yes.
Okay.
I have been here, so, yes.
Yes, very good.
Preston James, his group, yes.
Yes, so, the, the Self-Made Kings group did a lot of relationship-building over the summer. I believe they met 17 to 18 times, so, we, of course, you know, once they're out of school, we want to continue to cultivate that relationship and make sure that they still have positive connections with police. So, we would expect our school resource officers to be involved, again, with the Self-Made Kings group. Opportunities to work, you know, we have several scout... Opportunities to work, you know, we have several scout affiliated folks on our board as well as in the district, so we talked about maybe more of an Urbana Explorer Post opportunity. I don't know what the chief wants to say.
And we, a couple of these were ways that we would even partner with Champagne, with some other things that I know that they've, they offer, they have a youth police academy where they had different, we could see plugging in over there and helping out, whether it's an Explorer Post or starting, working with them and then breaking off if it, if it gains the requisite amount of momentum. There are, they do have summer school, and so then provide some sort of presence there. We also would look at any kind of, those outreach efforts, when you talk about non-enforcement contacts, the chief after chief will tell you, that's how we continue to work on police community relations, is one positive contact after the next positive contact. And outside of stopping to give somebody a traffic ticket or some sort of enforcement contacts, we, you know, whether it's Jetty Rhodes and other things, to make sure that they're plugged in at those types of events. I've been, I was, I've been pleasantly surprised as Officer Robinson's gone plugged in here with the amount of Youth Assessment Center time that she's been able to build into her schedule. 10 years ago, when we started the Youth Assessment Center and I was Lieutenant Investigations, I don't think we quite envisioned how far-reaching it has been in all of the things that it can do, outside of, again, just like the sort of law enforcement, discipline-type purposes. And we know, we know the Park District has a variety of opportunities, and we would also then finally sort of request in working with the, the union and whatnot to say, hey, can we, we'll try to schedule that time off during that time as well, so somebody's not gone for the entire month of October. So we're trying to work on, those things we're in discussions on, so that's kind of how we envision some of that, I guess, some of that summertime. So I believe that's the last official slide, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Except that one. So I'll leave that up with its shining orange and see if, what kind of questions we have and whether I'm the right guy or not, we might pass the mic around and do the best we can to, to answer some questions from the city council.
Jared.
Chief, one thing is stood, stood out to me, listening to this presentation, and that's, I guess, I'm curious about the role of the other officers who are not SROs, are regular field officers, and if they have any exposure to what Officer Robinson is doing on a daily basis, or who's the high school SRO?
Currently, Darren McCartney is filling, is filling that role and that's still in that split position.
Okay. I'm just curious, do the other officers come to school? And if you will, ride along with the SROs to see what they do on a daily basis? Or do they, are the SROs kind of living alone in their roles? It seems to me that there seems to be a lot of opportunity for isolation from, from other officers, and I'm curious as to that, for first part of my question.
So for the first part of your question, historically, my, my answer to that is perhaps slightly, except they were only there half-time and they were covering two schools, and so they would work if they needed extra help. Sometimes another detective would come help them, sometimes it might be the, the car on the street. Currently, in the four weeks that we've done the pilot program at the middle school now, I don't believe there's been a, a ride-along type issue, or, we haven't done that. My first step would be that as she goes through these things, come back to a briefing and say, hey, guys, just so you know, this is what's happening there, and this is, this is how this goes. I actually envisioned there also being some detective time, they're the ones who read every police report in the morning. And so when they, the juvenile detectives hit that report, they know student X and student Y have a problem with student A and B, this happened last night on, on this, on Main Street, we need to make sure that she is aware of that. So I guess I'll say it's kind of a work in progress.
Sure. So the reason I ask that is because it makes me think of, this makes me think of CIT so much in that specialized, very focused, specific interactions with people that are very different than our typical officer civilian interactions that we might see. And so that makes me think, you know, just how we want as many officers as we can to be trained in crisis intervention, maybe it would also prove us to think, you know, officers might need to be exposed to this. It might also be really positive for, you know, you talk about these positive non, non-enforcement engagements, for the students to see not just the SROs that they know, but some of the other officers in the community, because problems that don't exist in a vacuum in the school. And if they're in environments where those, where they might run into the police in other situations, helping to see, oh, hey, you know, this is Officer such and such, I work with them on the, on the Urbana PD, you know, and they have a positive interaction with both of those officers in tandem at some time during the school, to get exposure to seeing, to seeing them, become more comfortable. That's why I was asking, I'm just thinking, if, if I'm a student in, you know, and that's the only officer that I know, and that's the only officer I'm ever exposed to, when I see a different officer, if I were in a different situation, I might not react in the same way if I have a positive relationship with that person. Just food for thought, something that came up.
Understood, and, and it's, and I think some of that's happened during the overtime ways, we've, we've covered some of this, and I'm sure some officers are better at it than others. I will also tell you that I think one of the interesting things about spending time at the school is that you physically learn your way around if you've never been in Urbana High School. It's, it can be quite amazing, God forbid armed intruder day happens. I mean, we've had, I know that the officers have gotten key, and we've had shift tours just to kind of understand, well, this is the old part, and they filled this part in in 1950, and then they, you know, just to understand where you're going can also be some of a challenge, so even beyond relationships, just some of the pure logistics. Thank you.
Can I add to that?
You may.
So I know we have on this slide the summer school presence, and the little bullet underneath there is the educational opportunities for students and parents. So that is, I think, something that we've talked about too, in terms of how can we get, you know, to desensit, not desensitize students completely, but take away that fear of officers. So these summer educational opportunities is a way to do that. And what Officer Robinson didn't mention is that we still collaborate with the city through Risk Watch. It is a community program where Officer Robinson kind of has a relationship with students because they, they're used to seeing her as the Risk Watch, one of the Risk Watch officers, I can't remember which one, do you do gun safety maybe? Yeah, so she's going to be doing them all now, there you go. So that, that's been another way that, that we've been able to get our officers in front of students, is through the Risk Watch program too. Charisse.
Yeah, I, I wanted to know, and Ms. Tatum, I know you could probably tell me, are there deans back in the high school now, or no?
Not yet, so the...
Are deans and counselors the same thing, or no?
No. So the clarifying acronym that we had up here that we didn't explain out, the SI, the Student Interventionist, is the role that basically took the place of the deans. So they, they're serving in almost a dean-like role now, in that they, they still support students one-on-one, they're still kind of a first point of contact for discipline things that might happen at the school, they work directly with the school resource officers, they make parent contacts and follow-ups. So they're not called deans, so to speak, but they, they do function very similarly in that role.
So what did a dean do?
So the difference, when the discussions were going around taking away the deans, it was the punitive piece around, you know, the deans were the ones who suspended, at least that was the original conversation, right, is if we take away the deans and call that role something else, then that role becomes more restorative and, and, and less punitive. But the reason it caused a lot of, I guess, friction within the district was, you know, several of the deans who'd been in those roles, had been in those roles for many, many, many years and had developed longstanding relationships. So the dean, you know, may administratively have been seen as someone who was just punitive, but in some of the eyes of the students, they were their go-to people, or people that they had really strong connections to. So, I mean, it just depends on who you talk to in, in terms of where they fall on that side of the coin. But we have the Student Interventionist, they, they function very much like in, in that dean-like role right now. They are very different from counselors, counselors at the high school. Yeah, counselors at the high school. Yes, we do have counselors at the middle school and the high school, and their role is much more an academic support. And so they're helping to make sure students are getting the college and career classes that they need for the future, so.
And that relationship building is like huge. I mean, that's for the SRO, and to a certain extent, sort of what Jared said, even to get a little smattering, right now, I want to get those two SROs embedded so that they're part of that team and...
And part of, maybe even helping the counselors in, in the sense of guiding that, a, a student to a more, a role of, of success academically.
Sure, and, and part of our goal for all of our students is you have to be in school to get that academic piece, right? And that means you're not in, you're not in jail, you're not detained, you're not at home, being chronic truant, you're at school and you're there to learn, and, you know, and that, that, just having that mindset helps the counselors do their job to make sure that they have what they need academically, so.
Okay.
Other questions? Bill?
Yeah, so when, when someone gets a station adjustment and goes to the Youth Assessment Center, does that, is there in correlation with that and getting an out-of-school suspension? Are these, how do you, what's an out-of-school suspension? And how many of those cases end up as out-of-school suspensions?
Well...
I don't know that I have a good answer for you. I, I guess real quick with regards to...
The station adjustment.
The, the station adjustment says, so a station adjustment is actually seen as sort of a pre-criminal justice system action. So when, i- if, if we arrest a 15-year-old for robbing the bank, they will go immediately to the state's attorney's office, and the state's attorney's office will charge them as a delinquent minor with regards to the crime of armed robbery. If they do, they're fighting in the park and knock out a kid's tooth, we might then recommend they go to the Youth Assessment Center and go to Superior Court and do a lot of, and do those things. And so prior to the state's attorney's office, that's where we would do station adjustments. They always do, I can't remember if it's the Yazzy, or there's, there's, there's a screening tool they use there to look for a variety of different things when the kids go there. So they can determine, well, he's acting out in seventh grade reading because he's, he's, he's four grades behind, or there's other, there's other issues. So with regards to how stations, I don't, I think they're fairly independent.
Yes.
Typically, the station adjustment's probably going to be at things that are more, that are lower-tiered, if you will, not robbing a bank, so.
And, and we, and as Dr. Weemel said when he was here, we don't assign station adjustments at all, it isn't in the purview of the school district. But to answer your question about out-of-school suspensions, you know, we kind of have a continuum, right, of, you know, when a student does something, if it's a minor level thing, you know, they might get a detention, or they might have some timeout at class, kind of, someone mentioned timeout. And we have more restorative measures that we have at both campuses where a student, you know, we don't want to send students home ever. Again, we want them in school every day so they can learn and get what they need to be a student, so we have things that they can do in school to restore or remediate that, the behavior as much as possible. So, and unfortunately, there are things that happen that we do need to have a student out of school for, because having them out of school gives us an opportunity as a school to kind of put a plan in place for when they come back, or to have an opportunity to meet with parents. Sometimes there's some investigative work that our principals need to do to find out, you know, what happened, and, and that student might need to be home in order for those things to happen for a day or two, or maybe longer. But again, we have Restore U Room at the middle school and the high, is it called Restore U Room at the middle school too? And so we have a restorative place where students can have work, they can go out for a class period or more, where they remain on campus.
On campus suspension.
Yeah, it's kind of like an in-school suspension, but again, with a more restorative lens.
Okay. It seems like the tricky part's always going to be trying to distinguish between what's misbehavior and what's actually illegal, and that where the officer needs to get involved.
And so...
So if somebody's bouncing a ball down the hallway and the officer's not going to try to arrest them for that?
And so, yes, we have talked about, so these two slides kind of address that, like, you know, Officer Robertson, I think Dr. Weemel said, you know, she's not intervening in things that are, that our administrators need to be addressing, right? So if there's a student refusing to go to class, or some of the kind of disruptive or disrespectful behaviors that a middle schooler might display, that is something that Dr. Weemel and his team would get involved in. So, you know, Ms. Robinson's not dragging kids to class, or dragging kids out of class or anything like that, but she is there as a, when, when things do escalate to a level that could be criminal, or even just could be, again, as support, as that relationship. We had a situation, gosh, maybe on her first day, or her second day, that, first day, that I came over and we had to kind of pow-wow as a group around what we wanted to do, and I think Dr. Weemel and I wanted to be a little harder, and, and Officer Robinson was the one saying, well, you know, let's, let's talk about this as an option, or, you know, I, she had more information than we did because of her, in her role as a police officer. So I think, you know, she didn't right away say, yes, let's give them the most punitive consequence that we can. It was, and not that Dr. Weemel and I were trying to do that either, it was just, she already jumped right in with being on the side of the student, and, and what can we do as a support for this child? Because clearly that is what they needed in that moment for this particular situation, so.
And that's one of the reasons why we want to make sure that the school's involved in that selection process. So when we ask who wants to do this, it, not, you know, just like not every officer wants to be on the SWAT team, not every officer wants to be the middle school SRO. And so we have to try, we try to plug and play, and they, we wanted them to be involved in the selection process, and, and so then we'll, and we'll reach out to them, how's it going, you know, and those types of things.
What kind of formal training is there for, for SROs? Is there a unit at the PTI, please?
So there is, so as Deputy Chief Searle's talked about a little bit, initially, we're going to do sort of just in-house, on-the-job training with the current school resource officers. There is a, I believe it's 40 hours, a one-week class that the National Association of School Resource Officers puts in, we will send them to that.
That could be another summer activity, I guess.
As timing allows, or, you know, even if, you know, let's say in January, the, because we're trying to look for maybe a, we're hoping for next semester to start a, the high school officer full-time and not do a split thing like we're doing this fall. Maybe one can go to class while the other one covers two schools, and we'll flip-flop, and, you know, we'll, we'll kind of wait and see. But there is, there is formal training, and there's, there's continuing ed as well.
Do you think we need to have some redundancy? Would you have to have three people trained to cover?
We currently have, so we have others, one of the things that we would do is depending on the scenario, so Jeff Steinberg and Darren McCartney would currently be detectives who have already been to this particular training, so if we need backup, or call, or somebody's on vacation, or sick, or having babies, or whatever's happening, we would be able to hopefully cover with an appropriately trained person.
I'm glad you're thinking about the school-to-prison pipeline, of course, that's probably what jumps into all of our heads when we first start thinking about more police in schools. I think looking at the disparity of how discipline is, is handed out, whether it's from an officer or, or school personnel, seems to be more of what causes the school-to-prison pipeline. I think it is a thing, and I don't know if it's, you know, a local thing or not, but...
It's a national thing.
Yeah, it's a national thing. I, I think that people, sometimes the disparity in the severity of punishment is what adds up when, when there's bias, or, when it's greater for disadvantaged students for a variety of reasons, and usually, you know, nothing, nothing intentional.
Right, and, and I think that's where we'll look, we'll post some of those, the juvenile arrest rates over time do tend to fall, so that there isn't necessarily a huge spike, you know, when the officer's there. I, I will mention, of course, that there's always, there's always the worst stories that pop up on your Google News feed about some SRO somewhere that's arrested a six-year-old, and that's on us to make sure that we are fostering the right training, selecting the right people, embedding them in the school appropriately, so they don't think that that's some way to solve a problem, so.
Okay, well, thanks, thanks for all the information, I'm still going to be digesting it for a while, I think.
Mary Alice.
So one of the purposes is to reduce the delinquency in the juvenile population. I'm curious, since Champagne has less than 1,000, you know, one SRO to 1,000, what are their rates like? Are they seeing positive results in this?
I know Rich has that data.
Rich, would you like to speak to that issue?
So I don't have their arrest data immediately.
Speak into the mic, please.
Sorry. I don't have their...
I don't have their arrest data immediately available to me. I can tell you anecdotally in the conversations that I've had with the deputy chief over there that have sort of ushered the program along, their arrest rates are down.
Okay, all right. I mean, it just seems like.
I can't speak any more intelligently than that.
No, I mean, since we have all these other communities directly surrounding us, it would be very interesting to see that tangible results that have.
Yeah.
Come from having the SROs in the schools.
Yeah, they've had theirs since, oh, I don't know, 2005-ish, maybe?
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so they've been in place for quite some time and I know that was one of the things that they were keeping, keeping track of. I just don't have it with me this evening, but I know it's down.
All right.
And I know one of the things we did here was, um, that when they first started, there was an initial spike, right? Because now that the officer's there, there's, you know, all kinds of things where we're being referred, but then every year after, you know, those numbers were lower and lower and lower. Because, again, the, the role of the school resource officer is to prevent, not provoke, right? Not to get more things going, but to really prevent things. And so I think the more relationship and connection building we can do, um, you know, our hope is that the school resource officers are, um, finding things out ahead of time, you know, and being in the buildings on Monday, Mondays are tough, um, at our middle school and especially at our high school because of all the things that happened in the community over the weekend that, that, again, filter into schools that, um, didn't happen at school but end up there, right? Because now the kids are there on Monday morning. So it, it is a way to, to be a prevention, um, to help us stop things before they happen.
So I guess one of the things, kind of to piggyback a little bit on what Jared had said, was, um, there's been a lot of conversation in terms of how to embed the SROs and to make them part of the community within the school system, which absolutely should be priority number one. Um, but you also have to have that, that connection, right, to the police department and have that communication being flowing. So we went through kind of a day, a typical day. I'm wondering if perhaps you could speak towards how are we going to be assuming, making sure that we have that integration with the police department?
Yeah, so that was one of the questions that the school board poses. How are the, how are the SROs gonna know what's going on? Since there's the community, school, school-to-community flow, um, you know, we, we've got briefings every morning for day watch, we've got briefings every afternoon for second shift, we've got briefings every night, we've got detectives that read reports five days a week, all those things are valuable means of communication. We've got emails, we've got message boards, we've got messaging in the cars, we've got text messages. It's not unusual for at 10 o'clock at night for me to get a text message from the current SRO, "Did you know about this?" "No, I didn't know about this," and then I text her, or she texts me and say, "Hey, what about this?" So there's constant communication, constant flow of information, and oftentimes, it's very specific, related to very specific students.
Is there any FaceTime?
Uh, yeah, yeah, there is. Um, you know, uh, with, with the current model, there's more because they're in and out of the office so much, doing detective stuff and school resource officer stuff. Um, with, with Officer Robinson thus far, I mean, I, I personally see her probably a couple times a week. She'll come in, she'll say, "What about this? What about that?" Um, we collaborate on different strategies. She and I were, was it last week? Yeah, last week, she and I were trying to figure out how to handle an issue with, with the middle school girls doing photo things they shouldn't be doing, so, and we came up with a good solution. And that took us, you know, 15 or 20 minutes and I think it was probably the appropriate solution for the circumstances. So, yeah, uh, it, they're not gonna live in the bubble. They're not gonna be off on their own, you know, thrown to the wolves. There's gonna be lots of discussions and they will be a resource for patrol officers and patrol officers will be a resource for them and they will be a resource for detectives. And, a- a- and this is, I think, held very true in Champaign. I know that Dr. Avery Tatum and I have talked a couple times about some kind of scary things that have maybe come close to happening and only because of the school resource officer, things were able to be avoided. So, um, I know in Champaign, it's been very successful with respect to that flow of communication. And it's, I mean, everybody texts, everybody calls these days and it's constant, it's constant communication.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Okay, well, thank you. I also want to acknowledge in the audience is Paul Pulaski, who's a school board member. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, this is, um, this is just the first initial, um, briefing, if you will, for the school board and the city council, and then we'll keep you posted as, um, things develop.
And I did just want to mention, I'll continue to work with the chief and deputy chief on the, or were you getting ready to say that?
No, we're doing fine.
On the intergovernmental agreement piece, um, you know, I think we are going to work really hard to get that back to our board at our next study session, November 5th. Um, so we'll have something to bring back to you guys as well at that point.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, yes.
Our second presentation is from Scott Test on the Urbana landfill solar development update. And then we do public input after the presentations, so they'll be next. Yeah, there's just one more presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm happy to be here tonight to update you on our landfill solar development project. Uh, this is an image of, uh, an aerial image of Urbana's closed landfill. There are a number of parcels, four different parcels there, they're outlined in yellow. Altogether, they make up the Urbana landfill complex. Um, this property or collection of properties is already being reused in a number of ways. We have a police firing range there, we have a fire department training facility, and we have the landscape recycling center. But there is still about 40 acres there, uh, of property that has no other economic use. We just have to maintain it in terms of land, basic landfill maintenance and also mow the lawn. And so the notion here is to utilize this space, uh, for, uh, solar energy development. This is, um, what it looks like on the ground. Uh, the portion, the 40 acres we're looking at for solar development is somewhat flat. It's not, uh, it's not perfect. A farm field would be a better solar, solar location, but, um, that also has other competing economic uses, whereas this space does not. In 2017, the city did a qualifications-based selection for a landfill solar developer. Um, we selected SunPower. They're a large global manufacturer and installer of solar energy equipment. Uh, we entered into a lease option agreement approved by city council in December of last year. The lease option gives SunPower the, uh, opportunity to develop a solar array on our closed landfill for a limited period of time. And I'll thank Jim Simon for spending a lot of eye-straining hours looking at that lease option and lease agreement. Um, he didn't wear glasses before we started that project, but here he is now. Thank you, Jim. Yeah, it was a long one. In August of this year, our project, uh, with SunPower was selected for a low-income community solar incentive, um, by the, the state Illinois Solar for All program. That's a program created and funded by the Future Energy Jobs Act. The Illinois Commerce Commission approved that award earlier this month. And so now the, the SunPower is actually waiting for the paperwork and will be counter-signing it. Uh, but the city, uh, city staff will work with SunPower to convert the lease option to a long-term lease, so that lease will be 15, 20, 25 years, something to that effect. And that lease will be substantially in the form that was presented with the lease option. So low-income community solar arrays, as part of the Future Energy Jobs Act, allows subscribers to buy a share of, uh, electricity produced by the solar array on our landfill. So that means an apartment or a household in the city, or actually anywhere in Ameren Territory, can subscribe or buy electricity from our solar array. We're not running a wire there, it's, uh, it's a, you know, it's a paperwork transaction. And then that purchase of electricity will be reflected on their Ameren bill. So it's somewhat similar to municipal electric aggregation, it's somewhat similar to, uh, choosing a retail electric supplier. You're electing a particular power supplier and that's reflected on your Ameren bill. You still get an Ameren bill, um, but you're buying your power from somewhere else. So there are community solar arrays incentivized by the Future Energy Jobs Act and then there are low-income community solar arrays incentivized by the Future Energy Jobs Act. So there's income qualifications and there's, uh, some assistance on the website I've got here to help folks determine if they, uh, meet the income qualifications to be eligible to buy electricity from this project. And as this is an off-site project, uh, that is selling electricity rather than, uh, installing a solar energy system at someone's home or apartment, there's no upfront costs for anyone. You simply, uh, start subscribing to a particular retail supplier, namely, our low-income community solar project. So this project provides a number of benefits to the community. Um, obviously, we're increasing clean renewable energy that's used in the state. Um, we're increasing low-income access to renewable energy, low-income household access to renewable energy. Uh, the portion of the, uh, of the project that's fenced robed in and has solar panels on it will be maintained by the developer, who will be the long-term owner. So that's a section of landfill that we no longer have to mow. The Champaign-Urbana Solid Waste Disposal System, which governs this particular part of the Urbana landfill complex, will receive lease payments for the use of the property. The property will become taxable because it will be a primarily commercial use and those taxes will be paid by the developer as just another project cost. And the city will purchase a portion of the electricity produced by the array for, uh, city facilities' electricity needs. With that, I'll take any questions you have.
So does the city, um, get the same 50% discount that the low-income folks get?
We do.
Cool. And, um, with, and so that's 50% on the cost of the energy supply, which I noticed on my bill is a very small part of my total bill.
Right.
But, um, so anyone that meets income qualifications doesn't have anything to lose, basically. You don't, there's no upfront cost, you can get 50% off your supply cost. So what if there's more demand than, than what the solar array can supply?
That'd be a great problem to have. Um, so there, there is more energy legislation being debated in Springfield this year that would extend, expand this type of programming. And so if there's more interest than there is supply, then hopefully we'll have more state funding to do more of these types of projects around the state.
So, so it's not, so anybody from our community could actually apply today for one that's already going somewhere else?
There is a, a state, I believe it's a state-created website called solarinthecommunity.com, I believe. And it is, um, there's no projects on it, but it is set up as a, kind of a clearinghouse or a market for community solar subscriptions in Illinois. And so what it appears to be is that at some point, when all these projects become, you know, come online, and this is the first year and there's not one online yet, um, that a person could go there and shop. Uh, so any, you can, any, any potential subscriber can buy electricity from any community solar array within, uh, their utility territory, so ComEd and ComEd Ameren, in Ameren.
Okay, and well, it sounds like maybe our township office should get familiar with the application process so that they can help some of the low-income folks they work with.
Yeah, we've talked to SunPower, uh, about subscriber recruitment and, um, they indicated they may, uh, hire a subcontractor for that, but we've discussed, um, the potential of working with community partners to share information about this opportunity and recruit subscribers.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Eric?
I wonder if you'd consider, uh, you, you alluded to the, the expanded, um, Green Jobs bill that's, that's in the, that has been introduced in the state legislature but not acted on. I wonder if you would be willing to come back and brief us on that with, perhaps, in my mind, the notion that maybe the council might resolve and send that resolution to our representatives and to the leadership in Springfield, uh, our support of that, if people would choose to do that after their brief?
Sure, there's, um, there's two or three or four different competing energy bills right now. I don't follow them that closely, but we can, uh, seek out some information to share.
Okay, yeah, that, that'd be great. I think that, I think there's a hope to get some action even during the veto session, so it probably has to be fairly soon.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Scott. Next up, we have public input. I have a card from Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood. She does not wish to address members, but to express their continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. I have a card from Eldress Melinda Carr regarding the school resource officer presentation. I apologize, I see you did check the box at the time. I'm sorry, I misread the card.
It's okay, I didn't know if I was gonna make it here because I was late and I didn't know there was another meeting in between, so. Good evening to the Honorable Mayor Marlin and Urbana City Council. I'm reading a statement on behalf of the Minister of Alliance of Champaign-Urbana and Vicinity. As the Urbana City Council and Urbana School District review the possibility of developing a full-time school resource officer for the Urbana High School and Urbana Middle School, we would like to bring to your attention our concerns about the reference to the role, about the reference to the role of an informal counselor on page two of the document, paragraph six, being presented at the meeting tonight. That paragraph states, quote, "The final role is that of an informal counselor. This role is important to provide information to students, parents, staff, and administrators on a variety of topics. This also provides students a safe way to discuss issues occurring in both the school and the community," unquote. Our concern with this paragraph is related to protecting the rights of parents and their students who come in contact with an SRO, Student Resource Officer, who is first and foremost a police officer charged with carrying out law enforcement. Here are some of the concerns we have about the program. Questions. Does a SRO have full access to any student at any, at any time? When a student talks to an SRO voluntarily, do they need to have permission from the parent? What will the participation look like? Will the student be asked to participate in informal, informal counseling, a consultation, police interviews, voluntary contact, and other general contact with the police without the parent, legal guardian, or attorney or other legal representative being present? If a parent does not want their child or their children to talk informally with an SRO, will they be able to opt out of the program? We understand that sometimes there is an immediate, immediate need to have law enforcement involved during, during violent incidents which occur on school grounds. At the same time, we also want to make sure we address community concerns of students being treated fairly when incidents do occur and to do our best to prevent or avoid the school-to-prison pa- pipeline. Respectfully submitted, and this is, um, our President Reverend Charles R. Nash, Minister of Alliance of Champaign-Urbana and Vicinity. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Reverend Robert Freeman is here. He'll, uh, be available for input and clarification when the topic of the electronic sign at the churches comes up. And. the topic of the electronic sign at the churches comes up. And last is Jason Rock. And I'm, road closures?
Pedestrian stuff.
Oh.
So I actually, I talked about this a little bit at a different time, and I've just been sort of taking some photos. How do I present? That's not gonna work. So I've just been taking some photos and sort of making some notes and sort of, I want to, I want to start by sort of talking a little bit about what, how road closures are supposed to work for pedestrian stuff. So the manual on the uniform traffic control devices says that the needs of pedestrians, including those with disabilities, are a basic requirement of work zone traffic control. Pedestrian needs must be addressed in temporary traffic control plans and be consistent with ADA requirements. Jumping ahead, this is sort of the three ways that you can provide for this. One is maintaining these existing pedestrian pathways. I believe that this is considered sort of the best way to do it, if you can avoid closing pedestrian pathways. The second is developing alternative pedestrian pathways that are parallel to and easily reached if a pedestrian pathway must be closed. And then the third way, the third thing is that when you have, when you do have to close a pedestrian path, you have to identify and develop alternative pathways and then put in signage that detours pedestrians ahead of the closure, similar to how we deal with car traffic. You don't drive people straight up to a closure and then expect them to sort of figure out the wayfinding afterwards. The most important thing, obviously, is pedestrian safety, and you have to maintain ADA access and such. The bottom part is that if you're, if you only expect pedestrians to cross roadways, and you're not willing to put in pedestrian pathways that are on the same side, you're introducing additional risk to pedestrians because now they have to cross the roadway twice. So I want to show you some pictures from road closures or from sidewalk closures, and then I also put the dates on them. So this is July 9th. It was a closure due to, I think, additional stuff on Main Street being put in, so additional sewer or sanitary or something being put into a building. This closure was maintained for about a month, and the expected behavior for pedestrians during this closure was to cross mid-block and then cross a second time. That mid-block crossing isn't really safe at the best of times. It's definitely not safe at the worst of times. On the 31st, across the street from this, some signage went in. This is a fairly common complaint that I have about how Urbana signs closures or signs stuff for drivers. Often, the road closure signs or the men-at-work signs are placed in the center of pedestrian pathways. So there's no closure for a pedestrian pathway here, except because of this sign. This actually runs afoul of ADA. I'm fairly confident that this is, that this does not meet ADA requirements. It doesn't maintain three feet of space on the sidewalk. This happens frequently. These probably don't run afoul of ADA because there's still three feet here, but this is a heavily trafficked, this is near the bus stop, so lots of people are walking in this space. Again, another closure where this is the first closure notification, it's blocked the ADA ramp here. So if you're an ADA, if you need a ramp, you come up to this closure, have to turn around, go back a block, cross at an unsignaled crosswalk, and then end up on the other side of the road, and then, I don't know exactly how you would get back across the road. This closure could have easily closed this road and provided a pedestrian pathway on the same side of this road, at least when they weren't doing this work here, but it wasn't. So an example of a closure on campus that actually did this pretty well, after I asked them to do it, is to redirect pedestrian traffic into a bike lane. As long as you signal that bikes should sort of yield to pedestrians, bike lanes can be used as a routing for pedestrian traffic. It provides a same-side cross, or a same-side pedestrian path. Cyclists can be asked to slow down and share space with pedestrians without any issue. Putting in some traffic cones to sort of move car traffic over a little ways is a really good way to sort of make space for both pedestrians and cyclists. And that's about my time. So, thank you.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention. Those are very illuminating examples. I have no other cards for public input. We'll move on to unfinished business, and there is none. Are there reports of standing committees? Reports of special committees? Reports of officers? All right, we'll move on to new business. And first up is Ordinance 2019-10-053, which is an ordinance approving a major variance at 304 South Race Street. This is Marcus Ricci.
So the First United Methodist Church of Urbana is upgrading their 70-year-old sign and would like to use a sign that is more versatile, more convenient to update, and more energy efficient. Citing an electronic display outside the B3 General Business or CRE Conservation, Recreation, Education zoning district requires a major variance. At its September 18th, 2019 meeting, the Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on this case. No members of the public spoke regarding the case, and the ZBA voted unanimously to recommend that city council approve the variance with one condition. Here is the location of the church at the southeast corner of Race and Green, and the location of the existing sign. The new sign would be in the exact same location as the old sign, and it would be a little larger in size. Other than the proposed major variance to allow the electronic display in the B4 district, the proposed sign would meet all other zoning requirements of the zoning ordinance. The site, here is a photo of the site, and you can see the sign right there. The zoning for the site, which is right here, is in the B4 Central Business District, surrounded on all four sides by more B4 General Business District. Downtown is further to the north, approximately two blocks. The proposed sign would adhere to the zoning requirements for both freestanding signs in the B4 district, as well as electronic displays in the B3 zoning district. So it would meet, you know, if this was in the proper zoning district, it would meet all of the zoning ordinance's requirements. Here is the design that was submitted with the sign permit. It's approximately 92 inches tall by 87 inches wide, and the electronic display portion here below would be less than 50% of the size of the entire sign, which is one of the requirements of the zoning ordinance. The fact that this sign currently, as it stands, in order to change the message on it or the service times on it, you would have to reprint a new paper sign and then adhere it to inside the cabinet. So what they are hoping for is to have a sign like this, where this would, the upper half would be a static portion, and the lower half would be the electronic display that can be changed remotely, and it would adhere to all the requirements for the zoning ordinance for an electronic display. Can't change the message any more frequently than three minutes. It has to be no brighter than .3-foot candles and ambient light, and it would auto dim according to light levels. Although electronic signs have been permitted as early as 2002, they are permitted for any use or event in the B3 and CRE zoning districts, and they're also permitted in the B4 and B4E districts, but only for community events operating on a regular basis on city-owned property. In this case, the proposed sign is for events that are not on city-owned property or operated land, essentially for non-community events in the B4 district. The staff report evaluated the request using the criteria required by the zoning ordinance. The ZBA found that the request met the criteria. At the September 18th meeting, staff recommended that the ZBA forward the case to city council with a recommendation to approve the major variance with one condition. The board voted unanimously with a recommendation to approve the request with the first condition as presented, which is that the sign be in general conformance with the attached site plan and design. So you've seen the sign design, the site plan. As you can see, it's gonna be in the exact same place that it's been since 1957, approximately 19 feet in from Race Street and 25 feet south of Green Street. The minimum requirement of the zoning ordinance is a 15-foot setback. The report also summarized the staff findings, which include that the variance request is due to the special circumstance that the church is located at the periphery of the Central Business District, and that converting its internally-lit sign to one that incorporates an otherwise conforming electronic display is unlikely to negatively affect the essential character of downtown Urbana. And that the proposed variance should not cause a nuisance to adjacent properties because the existing sign has not been a nuisance, and that the proposed electronic display will not face or be within 100 feet of residential districts or uses, and the sign will comply with all other zoning regulations, including brightness, auto dimming, and how frequently the message changes. The city council has the following options: to approve the ordinance or approve the ordinance along with any appropriate conditions, or to deny the ordinance. And that is the end of the presentation. Pastor Freeman is here to answer questions as well.
Any technical questions for staff or Pastor Freeman?
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move Ordinance Number 2019-10-053, an ordinance approving a major variance for the church at 304 South Race Street, ZBA case number 2019-MAJ-11, with the condition that the proposed electronic sign location and size generally conform to the site plans that have been presented here tonight. Be approved.
Second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Eric. Any discussion? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hayson?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Dave Kussman?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin? Yes. That motion passes, and congratulations to the church on your 183rd anniversary, which makes you one of the oldest, if not the oldest congregations in the city of Urbana.
We are the oldest.
Okay.
We were formed 183 years ago, before Urbana was formed, before the University of Illinois was formed. We were there. And so we welcome you to come and visit us. We have now 14 agencies in our building, and we are, we're totally filled. Can you believe that? 170,000 square feet. It's filled with organizations and groups around Champaign County. So we're grateful, and thank you all. We're so happy. We're ecstatic. Thank you so much.
Pastor Freeman has opened the doors and invited the community into his building, and it's been a great success.
Yes, yes. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next up is Ordinance Number 2019-10-054, which is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of real estate at 2310B East Main Street. Nick Hanson.
All right. So the property at 2310B East Main Street is a property that community development has dealt with for approximately the last five years. So the property has gone into foreclosure, and we have an opportunity to buy the property at a fair price. And then we would turn around and then have the property demoed through the grant through the state, the APP, the Urbana Properties Program. So, and then several options on the table after that, and one would be potentially to hold the property for a possible connection to the Kiccope rail trail. So the Kiccope rail trail currently stops about 600 feet to the east of the property. So that's been one of the concerns for them, is how to kind of connect further down. So that's one of the options. Other options would be to turn around, either to sell the property. So... Is there questions that I can answer?
Mary Ellis?
I just wanted to confirm, it's, the zoning is R3, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Can I make a motion?
Absolutely.
I'd like to move for approval for Ordinance Number 2019-10-054, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of certain real estate, 2310BE Main Street.
I'll second.
Be East.
Sorry.
I almost did the same thing. And it was seconded by Bill. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hayson?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Dave Kussman?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Nick. Next up is Ordinance 2019-10-055, which is an ordinance suspending charging and collecting application fees for special event permit. Carol Mitten, city administrator.
As I explained in the memo that was submitted to council, we've run into some challenges with the combination of increasing special event application fees at the commencement of this fiscal year to better reflect our administrative costs, and also a discontinuation of a practice that was not authorized by the council to waive those fees for certain applicants, notably nonprofits, but not exclusively. Some of them were institutions. And so that combination has led to some challenges, and I just mean it's challenging, not anyone challenging us, but it's challenging to go from, to deal with an entity that didn't have to pay a fee in the past of any kind, and now we're asking them to pay a fee that was just completely unanticipated. So what I'm asking for is basically the council to approve a suspension of charging those application fees while we both work through what we might want to request in terms of authority to waive fees entirely, and also just revamping the special event application approval process to streamline it from our end so that we minimize the administrative costs in the first place. It's a little bit cumbersome the way we do it now. So this would just give us some breathing room.
And also, the goal is to clarify and just make easier to understand all around the special event process and be very consistent with everyone who applies. So it's cumbersome, and it's a, it's a process that kind of grew up over a period of years, and it's no longer really flexible enough to deal with all the different types of special events that have come across our desk in the last couple of years. So we're gonna just rewrite the thing so that it fits what we're doing today, and it will be much more consistent and transparent and clear to everybody involved.
I happily move adoption of Ordinance Number 2019-10-055 with enthusiasm.
Second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Bill. Further comments? Will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hayson?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Dave Kussman?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Wu?
Absolutely.
That motion passes. Last on the agenda is Resolution 2019-10-04R, which is the resolution authorizing intervention in the assessment complaint of OSF Healthcare System, which is similar to what you discussed at the town board meeting. Jim, do you want to add anything?
In the interest of time, Fred...
In the interest of time, Fred said it all.
Then I'd like to move to, for approval of this ordinance.
Resolution.
I have to say it, you guys. Resolution Number 2019-10-040R, resolution authorizing intervention and assessment complaint of OSF Healthcare System.
And I'm gonna give Dean the second because he hasn't had a chance. Okay. Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Hayson?
Yes.
Percy?
Definitely, yes.
Dave Kessin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Wu?
Absolutely.
That motion passes. No further business before this council meeting. The meeting is adjourned.